First up is review changes to the agenda, if any. I don't think I have any changes to make to the agenda. Gwen, do you have any changes to make to the agenda?
No.
Bruce, do you have any changes?
Um, no, no, I don't.
Okay, um, then we're good with that. There are no scheduled members of the public. Um, there are also currently no unscheduled members of the public, either online or physically here. I guess I should say I am physically at the town office. Uh, Bruce Mello, Gwen Tanza, Guy Tanza, Peter Barris, and the folks from Fact TV are all in the online meeting. Uh, we do not yet have Joseph or Shelby. Hopefully they will be on soon. First up is approving the minutes, and the first one is the minutes from the January 6th regular meeting. Um, I will say, Peter, I literally only saw one thing, which was on page one, under the members of the public, David Parker was not actually at the meeting.
Yeah, right, I saw that.
So if you remove David Parker as a member of the public, um, I didn't, I didn't have anything else that I saw that I thought needed to be changed.
Uh, Dave, I have something to change.
Hang on a second, Bruce, I'll get to you.
Okay, alrighty.
No. No.
Okay, Bruce, Bruce, what, you had changes?
Yeah, um, I don't know what it is in the thing. Uh, it has to do in the billing section, of course. It has to do towards the end of it where it specifies something about service contract for, um, 24, on call for 24 hours or something like that. It's, it's all not right. So if you could read the last couple of sentences, because I don't believe I have it in front of me, or do I?
Mr. Bobad advised obtaining maintenance services, Sandry, that Sandry offered an annual service policy for the boiler at $195.
Correct.
That the gas furnace had been recently serviced, no issues. And that section 16 of the building lease specifies calling for service, quote, "within 24 hours," unquote.
That's inaccurate, okay. What else is there?
Uh, then just Mr. Tanza noted that the Sandry contract would be in effect for one year from date signed.
That's fine, but that part that you just read is wrong.
Part about section 16?
Yeah, that's incorrect. That's, I don't know what happened there, but that's definitely inaccurate. What should say is-
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, what should it say, Peter, is section, section 15 of the, I probably did say section 16, I apologize for that. But section 16 of the lease, uh, that the town has no liability due to loss of use.
Was it section 15 or section 16?
Yes, no, it's 15. I have it right in front of me. After reading it a couple of times, I had to cut to the chase with it. It's about, uh, four or five sentences long. But that's basically what, what needed to be said was that, that the town has no liability to loss of use.
Does that make sense, Peter?
I'm just catching up with you here. This is the sentence that has a clause in it, and that section 15 of the building lease specifies calling for service within 24 hours, Mr. Tanza.
Right.
That the Sandry contract will be in effect-
Okay, but yeah, so, so the part that says, "and that section 16 of the building lease specifies calling for service within 24 hours," just that portion should be removed, and in its place should go, and Bruce, do you want to say again what you-
Yes, I can. Section 15 of the lease states that the town has no liability to loss of use. And everything else in there is okay, Peter. What Guy said in the stuff before.
Does that make sense, Peter?
So I just need to change it to 16 and specify-
To 15.
15.
15?
15.
Yeah.
One, five.
Change it to 15.
Correct. Correct. That the town has no liability to, due to loss of use.
Okay. Um, anything else, Bruce?
No, what I'll do is very quickly run through it when we go into the building part of the, of my billing thing, so that, uh, we don't need to understand this, because it has a lot to do with the maintenance and what we're responsible for and stuff. And I think it should be reviewed. It will only take me like 30 seconds to read it to everybody.
Okay, well, and we'll get to that later on. Okay.
Yep.
No other changes to the minutes, though?
Not for me.
Okay, uh, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from January, the January 6th regular meeting as amended. Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Second, I guess.
Seconded by Gwen.
Okay, sounds good to me.
It's okay. Any further discussion? Hearing those in favor of approving the minutes from the January 6th regular meeting as amended signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, then the regular meeting minutes from January 6th are approved, which brings up the minutes from the January 13th, 2021 special meeting. Um, I have no changes to those, because I did them, and they're like- Gwen, did you have any changes to those?
No.
Bruce, did you have any changes to those?
No.
Okay, then I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from the January 13th special meeting as presented. Is there a second to that motion?
No, seconded.
Seconded by Gwen again. Um, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the January 13th special meeting as presented signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, then both of those minutes are approved. And Peter, I did the minutes from this January 13th meeting, so I have those in case I didn't tell you that.
Ten, four.
Ten to four, I love that.
So, next up is new business and roadside tree removal. Um, and I have to say that I was hoping slash expecting that Mark, at least, if not Mark and possibly Archie, would be joining the meeting to discuss this, because honestly, I know nothing about it.
Dave?
Um, oh, yeah, Bruce?
I, I talked to Mark, he is going to join the meeting. He plans on it. I talked to him at about 5 o'clock.
Okay, um, so I guess what I'd suggest is-
Put that in with-
At the moment, let's table this for the moment, and we'll, we'll get back into discussing it when Mark joins us. I mean, I'll, I'll say, I don't have a problem with the quote, or I guess I'd just like to hear a little bit more about what the plan is, is all personally. But we'll wait until Mark, um, shows up to discuss it in more detail.
Okay.
So let's move on to, then to old business and to the town meeting warning. And I'll say that I'm a little, we'll get into a discussion of it, but I'm a little uncomfortable with us potentially voting this warning while two of the members are not here. So, um, anyway, let's get into a little discussion of it. So, so you guys have seen the warning.
Yep.
Based on the feedback that Guy got from the election division on how to handle appropriations, um, to make it consistent with what will be on the ballot, it seemed sensible um, to warn each of the appropriations as their own article.
Oh my god.
So that they then can be voted on the ballot each as their own vote. One thing I'll note, um, which you may or may not have noticed is, uh, it's very subtle, but in, in articles five through whatever for the, the recurring, I'm going to call them the recurring uh, appropriations, the ones that we have historically had approved by the town, I did, wording is like the rolled up article normally is, which says, "shall voters appropriate X amount of money to be raised in taxing taxes in continuing support of the organization?" Whereas the new appropriation requests, which are articles 24, 25, and 26 merely say in support of organization. Whether that, whether that will resonate with anyone or not, I can't say, and I'm not sure that it particularly matters. But I guess before, before I get too into that, let's just go through article by article and just make sure everybody's comfortable, and that we don't have any questions about the individual articles. Okay? So, and actually, before we even get to that, I guess, starting off with the description. It says, "The legal voters of the town of Brookline are hereby warned to meet in the Brookline Town Office in said town on Monday, March 1, 2021, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. to transact the following business by Australian ballot." I will say, the sample ballots and sample warnings, though there are a lot of resources on the VLCT website, um, in the event anybody from VLCT is watching this or watches this, most of those samples are bordering on useless, quite frankly. They have huge gaping holes in them. They don't really tell you how the warning, there's a lot of vagaries, and they have all kinds of disclaimers all over the place about how they don't take any responsibility for whether it's illegal or not. In any event, based on the various things I read in those examples, and based on the wording that we have historically used, which I like to believe has been legal enough to be okay for all these years, this seems like the proper or an acceptable way of, of starting off this warning. Guy, based on your things you've seen and your understanding, does that make sense to you? Do you think that that wording at the top is-
I think that's totally appropriate.
Let's say-
I think it's totally appropriate, appropriate, and as we learned a long time ago, keep it simple, to the point, and that's exactly what it, that does.
Yeah, okay. Um, Gwen, do you have any concerns or questions about that wording prior to the first article?
Absolutely not.
Okay, Bruce, does that make sense to you? Do you have any questions or concerns about that?
No.
A little section of it, okay. Um, hang on one second, somebody's joining us. Hi, who joined?
Hi, Dave, this is Mark Bill's calling in.
Hey, Mark. Hey, how you doing?
Hi, good, how are you?
Good.
You made it, Mark. Yeah, yeah, it went true. Yay.
So, so I'd like to suggest we, we bumped off of the roadside tree removal, um, waiting for you to join us, just because we wanted you to be part of that discussion for sure. Um, unless, unless Bruce or Gwen have any objections, I'm going to say that we pause on our discussion of, of the warning, and we'll bounce back to this in a moment, and we bounce back to talking about the roadside tree removal.
I agree before he gets disconnected.
Exactly. So, so Mark, I circulated to everybody the quote that we got, and I should say, I should say, Mark, that, um, Bruce is on the call, Gwen's on the call, Guy's on the call, Peter Barris is here, and the folks from Fact TV are here. Joseph and Shelby are not currently on the call.
Right.
Hopefully they will join, but they're not here at the moment. Um, but anyway, so I circulated to everybody the quote that Henry Carr sent, um, which just to summarize is basically a quote for two days of work for roadside tree removal, $2,500 a day, $5,000 total, essentially performing tree removal and trimming under your direction, where, where you want them to go and, and trim and remove trees.
Yeah.
So, um, do you want to just give us a quick idea of what the thinking is with this?
Okay, um, so what I've done is, is I, I, writing around town, I've identified, uh, certain trees that are, are dying, are in danger of, uh, falling into the road and require removal. And as I, uh, spoke one other time about, um, I, there's certain trees that I can get uh, under, without being too technical. And then there, there's trees that are near power lines, which I leave to the power company, uh, with their own crews. And then, um, then there's stuff that we're responsible for that is between the two, which involves a qualified tree person. And so I, I identified, um, most of the dead trees, and you know, this is an ongoing thing. So what I did was I identified the trees, and when I went to invite, uh, different vendors to come, uh, after talking with Archie and, and different people, um, we decided to try and use our, our local tree services. Uh, I started with in-town, uh, Tom Bloom. Um, I asked Tom Bloom personally if he would be interested in, uh, giving us a, a service and a price quote on dead tree removal, and he said at this time, he had interest, but he doesn't have the, the equipment, um, to do the proper job, such as the number one, each of the equipment being a bucket truck.
Okay, yeah.
So, so he said, in the, in the future, he, he would love to be asked again, but at this time, uh, was unavailable. So therefore, being the car tree was the last one to do tree work for us. I, I invited him, and, and also gave him a tour, and identified the, the trees that, um, I would like to see removed. And, um, I asked if he would send the town some paperwork, and, um, so he was very busy. This has taken a while because of, uh, the demand for tree removal. So, uh, it's been a process. I know we had a, a select board meeting back in the summertime where we did approve a certain amount of money for tree removal, and I was trying to keep it under the purchase policy. Um, I know that there's a lot of trees that would go way over the purchase policy, but I'm going with just the, uh, uh, priority first.
Hmm, yep.
Now, after talking with, um, with Mr. Carr, uh, he informed me that his crew, as, as his letter stated, um, they get $2,500 a day for all their equipment and all their crew, and that's chipper and cleanup. So I decided, uh, to maybe start with a two-day work program and see how much that got us done. Um, so this is going to include dead trees, uh, all over town, and also the, the trees on Hill Road, which, um, they're not dead trees, but they're the trees that need to get removed so that we can create a better corner and ditch.
Uh-huh, right, to do that where that's, where ledge is and stuff?
Right, right, get, uh, just north of the power line, um, so that'll help create a better drainage ditch around the corner. So, so it'll be the dead trees and that section. There's like 24 hemlock trees of anywhere from six inches to 20 inches that he said he can, um, remove. The landowner has given us permission for that. So that was, uh, basically sums up what I, uh-
And Archie, um, have you, you've spoken with Archie about this, and is Archie-
Yes, Archie was, right, yeah, Archie was, uh, very good with the, uh, the whole, what I just, uh, offered you guys.
Yeah.
Yes.
David, can I ask a question?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, Gwen, go ahead.
When, because this is all, all around, is that determined in the, in the price? Are you going in certain areas so that it doesn't, or not being charged for time for them to move one section to another section?
Yeah, we're, we're starting out on, um, Harris Hill Road. There's a very tall dead elm tree that's hovering over a residence. So we're going to start with that one, and we're working our way back around Hill Road. So it's all, you know, you have to move along a, a short distance, but it's all in sequence to the project that we'd like to, uh, get done. And, and this, again, this is, we're starting with a two-day work program. So it's 2,500 a day. We're going to see how far we can get in two days. That's $5,000. And then-
How many trees do you think that it, it is a total? Do you have an idea of how many total trees this is?
I, I had approximately 100 trees I had ribboned, and, uh, you know, some of these are only like, uh, a six-inch diameter tree, six to eight inch. You know, there's a, a lot of them are the dead elms you see that are, that keep shedding, um, shedding dead tops and branches. So, um, I, I know we probably won't get them all in two days, but I, I told them that I would like to see, you know, our accomplishment for two days. That would give us a, an idea of, of how much money the 100 trees would take. And if we can't fit it into the budget for this time, then at a later date, we'll know, uh, what we're up against to hire them in for another day's work. So, I, that was, my, that, yes.
And do remember discussing-
That makes sense. Gwen, do you, sorry, Gwen, do you have other questions?
Uh, I think that covers it right now.
Bruce, do you have any questions at the moment?
No, I'd love to have the wood. No.
Well, the look, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, the wood, if it's, unless it's being chipped, any of the wood that's decent wood, if there is any, would be left for the landlord or-
For the property owner, yeah, of course.
That, that's correct, yes. Yeah, everybody, everybody along the town right of way owns the trees. However, we have the right to maintain our right of way, so we will leave the wood for them. We chip the brush. And, and if anybody, if the landlord doesn't want it, he lets us know, and it can be removed by anybody or, or the town.
So, um, Mark, a couple of, I, I have a couple of questions. So, um, has the, these were, in theory, what's on your list is stuff that Green Mountain Power, because obviously Asplin's been going through, doing a ton of work along the power line. These are trees, the vast majority of these, if not all of these, are trees that they likely wouldn't have touched because they weren't really in there.
Yeah, that is correct, Dave. That's correct, and, and I, I asked, um, Green Mountain Power first, you know, if they would take the, these trees that I'm talking about, and, and they told me the ones they would take and the ones they wouldn't take, and therefore, that's the reason for hiring. They're just outside of the power companies right of way, you know, what they, what they say is, uh, benefits them.
Okay, um, so another question I have, though, Mark, is are there any ash trees on this, on your list?
Um-
Or as you're aware?
I don't think there's any ash trees to speak of. Mostly elm, cherry, maple. Um, I haven't seen any of the diseased ash trees yet that, uh, are in question.
Okay, I guess what I would just say is, in the back of your mind, remember that if you, if, if while they're going through and doing this work, if you do come across ash trees, we want to, we want to document those, because
Okay.
likely the possibility that we could get some funding after the fact for ash trees that we had removed.
Okay, very good, yeah.
We just want to keep track of those, if there are any.
Okay, alright, I'm, I'm sure at some point, there are some trees on, uh, Whitney Hill, um, that at some point, those would need to come down, but for right now, they're not, uh, on the first program.
Okay, okay.
So.
Um, I, I mean, I'll say, I don't have a problem with this. I think it makes sense, and obviously with the weather that we've had recently, it highlights how important it is for us to have, to keep doing this like you have been over the years. Um, Peter, you have a question? It looks like, hang on one second.
Yes, as a former life, I was a tree surgeon, and, um, had word from a biologist that burning elms is a good idea when you take them down to limit the spread of the Dutch elm blade, which is probably still worth it if we have elms.
Yeah, there, there, there's a major bunch of elms, so, uh, I know it makes great firewood, so I'm sure, I know some of the landowners are waiting to get the wood down, and, uh, you know, if it needs to go away, I'm sure we can find somebody that'll utilize it and burn it. Oh, yeah.
Good to burn it sooner than later.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, so I don't have, I don't have any concerns about this. I think it makes sense. I mean, I do like your saying, Mark, from my standpoint, I'd like us to do a couple of these days, see how far we get, and then, you know, if there's more work to be done, I'm not sure I'm going to be comfortable with us doing it until we get
Right.
later into the season.
Right.
But we'll see, we'll see how far we get, and I think it's a good idea to, to try to get him to do the work when he's available to do it, so we don't miss the window. Gwen, do you have any concerns about this or any other questions about it?
No.
Uh, I just wanted to ask a question.
Guy, yes, sorry, Guy.
Um, if you don't mind, um, the funds for this, uh, tree removal, what fund is that coming out of, Mark? Is that the summer maintenance? Is that the $39,000 that we appropriate you here?
This would be under contract services, yes, that would be, yeah, the big, uh-
The 39,000?
The big lump, yes.
Yeah, summer, right. I mean, though we're doing it in the winter, it is really summer contract services, because the intention was to do it in the summertime.
Yeah, no, I just-
Right, right, yeah.
Um, was that, any other questions, Guy?
Uh, no, I think that's a good idea, as long as, uh, you know, the guys can get working and do what they have to do with the weather. I think it's a great idea.
Bruce, um, do you have any concerns about this or other questions?
No, just statement, uh, I think, I think Mark did a due diligence, and I'm, 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 I'm 100% on board with it.
Um, good, yeah, I am as well. The other thing I'll say is that, you know, we, we had, we had Henry do this kind of work for a few days. I feel like he might have done three days or something like this a few years ago.
Yeah, right.
And they did a great, my recollection is they did a great job. They got a lot of trees taken care of, more than I think most of us thought they would be able to. Um, and it's really the only effective way to do this, rather than waiting for there to be one bad tree that has to be dealt with and paying somebody half this amount of money probably to get them to do just one tree. So, I think it's a good idea, and I think there, I'm, I, and I, and like, like Bruce said, I appreciate all the time and effort- So I think it's a good idea, and I think there, I'm, I and I, and like, like Bruce said, I appreciate all the time and effort you put into it. I appreciate that you reached out to Thomas to see if he would be somebody who was interested in doing the work. Um, you know, and and I'm glad that Henry's now able to do it and we can, we can get some of it taken care of.
Yeah, yeah, I I thought that um, you know, Henry was very busy when I first uh talked to him about this uh program. And he said that he would love to help us out, but it it would be after snow flu. So we now have snow and I guess he's flowed up enough to accommodate us. But, you know, I and I was thinking, if if we got the two days uh of an equal value of five thousand dollars, that would give us an idea how many trees that were processed and cleaned up. And then he could bill bill us and and that would show us, you know, we can check our budget, see where we're at with our budget for contract services and uh, you know, just compare everything and if we need him again, uh, get him on schedule again. So, but uh, I mean, like you said, I I did talk to Archie. Uh, and his only concern was the fact that um that we do get his insurance binder.
Yeah, which we have gotten.
Yes, okay.
Archie Archie did, I did, I did get an email where Archie replied to him and the and Henry's insurance carrier is already for, I don't know if anybody else. I have it. I have his insurance binder.
Um, okay, yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, all right, unless anybody has anything else, then I think we're gonna call that quits.
I have, I have one more thing for Mark.
Yes?
Mark, before we, before you get disconnected, you need to come in. We have some um
Mail.
mail and and re- and permits that need to be signed.
Okay.
Permits.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Um, are are those in the file, uh, where they usually are, in the folder?
Yeah, in your mail slot.
Okay, if I'm in town and and you're not there, is it something I can just go ahead and sign?
Yeah, they're in the uh, the the uh, the road commissioner thing, uh, it's right there in the mailbox. We always get your mail.
And the envelope, overweight permit.
Okay, I'll I'll take care of that. If there's any more question, you can let me know.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Yep, sure.
Um, okay, cool. Thanks, Mark, for that.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move off of that and move back to the town meeting warning. Um, so still no Shelby or Joseph, um, but going back to where we were on discussing the warning, so um, Article One. So per other examples that I've seen, like namely Newfane does it this way and Barry does it this way from the examples that we got. And it's, there doesn't, and actually, in the in the VLCT sample warning, they do say that you can do it this way. So we, I've warned all of the town officer positions that are up for election under one article. Obviously, when we get to making up the ballot, each of these will be voted separately, but they'll all be part of Article One. Um, so we have, I'll just run through it. We have the town moderator for a year. We have the town clerk for a term of a year, treasurer for a term of a year, delinquent tax collector for a term of one year, a select board member for a term of three years, a select board member for a term of two years, select board member for a term of one year, a lister for a term of three years, which was the open position that we knew about previously. But now, since we've had the resignation note from um Sheila and Marcia, we know that we are gonna have two other open positions of varying lengths. So we have a lister for a term of, and hopefully this, and I'll ask you guys in a second, I think that this makes sense to call it a lister for a term of two years, remainder of an open three-year term, and lister for a term of one year, remainder of an open three-year term. Um, auditor for a term of three years, cemetery commissioner for a term of three years, trustee of public terms funds for one year.
Cemetery commissioners, five years, Bruce, I mean, David.
Yeah, cemetery commissioner for a term of five years. Isn't that what it says?
That's not what you said, though.
You said three.
Oh, sorry, okay, sorry. Well, I'm, I mean, I guess I should say, I'm referring to the one that you all have. So if I've misspoken, you should know that, because
Yep, no problem.
copy in front of you.
Well.
No problem.
So what matters is that the one that's written in front of you is correct. Sorry if I misspoke. Anybody have any, Gwen, does that all make sense to you? Does that?
Yes.
And you think the describing the lister for a term of, I I couldn't really find an example of this, and I'm not sure.
Actually, the perfect way to do it, Dave.
Is that our, okay, good, cool.
Yep, and I'm glad that you left the uh constables out.
Yeah, I mean, my belief, based on everything we heard from everyone else, is at this point, we don't need to be voting on those constables every year. Um, and we left out town agent, because that position no longer really exists. But I think I've captured every every other position. Um, so Bruce, does this all make sense to you? Do you see anything about that that seems odd or?
No, I don't.
Is there anything, okay. Um, okay, so then we, so that's Article One. So obviously, in the warning, that's one article. When we get to, when we produce a ballot, it will still be one article, but there'll be separate votes for each of those positions with either the people that have been nominated and a write-in slot, or nobody having been nominated and just a write-in slot. Um, Article Two, sorry, go ahead, Guy.
I'm sorry, the only thing in my speaking with JP up at the Elections Division of Secretary of State's office, he should, he said that the town warning should reflect the ballot. So I'm almost wondering if in the in the town meeting warning that you have to put the articles just as you would do with the ballot. Uh, I, I'm just curious about that, David.
Well, what I'll say is, I, every example that I've seen doesn't have it that way. I mean, I know for a fact that other towns haven't done it. Like, I'm looking at the Newfane Town Report from last year, and they've done the, they've done their Article One pretty much the same way we've done it with the positions.
Okay, for the warning, okay.
Um, for the warning.
Yeah, but the ballot will be the separate articles.
But the ballot will be, well, no, they'll still, they'll still be only, they'll be separate votes, but technically, they'll all be under one article. Like, if you look, I don't know if you've seen any of the examples, but like, if you look at the example from the town of Barry, they have, for their ballot, they basically have Article One, which says something to the effect of to elect all town officers required by law. And then below that, they have the first block is the town moderator with the name of the person who has been nominated and a write-in slot, and then town clerk and the name of the person, blah, 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 blah. Um, I, I'll be honest, based on your feedback from JP, I don't really understand why we couldn't do the same thing for the appropriations.
I I was curious about that also, other than the fact that it gave the voters a chance to vote on every single thing, and I'm not so sure about that either.
The only thing I can, I can speculate about, and it's purely speculating, but it it may be a fair idea, is that, I mean, the reality is, right now, as we warn this, we know all of the details for all of the appropriation requests.
Right.
The reality in many circumstances, although possibly, I guess, not in ours right now. I mean, it, you know, we're not gonna put on the warning the names of the people who are going to be on the ballot for each of these positions in the warning. Whereas, as far as the appropriation, it's a specified, it it lends itself more to being a clear article that doesn't vary from the warning to the ballot, whereas the town officers is a little more loosey-goosey as far as how the article translates to the ballot. I think we're fine doing it this way.
That's fine with me.
So I I I think we should go with it that way.
Okay.
So um, but I agree with you, Guy, that, I mean, I I'm not completely sure. There's a lot of things about this that don't completely make sense to me. Um, but I think it's defensible the way we're doing it. Um, okay, so Article Two is shall the town accept the auditors' report, which will simply be a yes or no vote. Um, uh, Article Three is the one that I've now, in the latest version, there are numbers plugged in. Um, you know, shall the town vote to approve the general and highway fund expenditures net of non-tax budget revenues for the town as follows? Amount to be raised by taxes for general fund is one hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. Amount to be raised by taxes for highway fund is one hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Amount of fiscal year twenty twenty general fund surplus is thirty-three thousand six hundred and one dollars. Me- meeting, meaning a total municipal taxes to be raised of two hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. So a couple of things I want to mention about this. Um, these numbers have not been blessed by the auditors yet. Samara has gone through them multiple times. Uh, I think there's extremely small chance, there's almost no chance, I'm gonna say, of the one hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollar number changing, because that's basically based on the budget numbers that we drew up.
Right.
Um, the one fifty-seven, six seventy-nine for the highway fund is also based on the budget numbers that we drew up and is an exact flatline from level funding of last year, which is exactly what it was. So I don't think there's really any realistic chance of those changing. The surplus number, Samara has gone through several times, and at the moment, you know, until it's been audited, she's confident in this number. Whether the auditors will see something that she's done about the reconciliation of the FY twenty twenty budget number or actual numbers and want to change it, which would therefore change this surplus amount, we don't know. But unfortunately, we have to get a warning. And we have to have a warning. We don't technically have to have it this week, but unless we're gonna have a special meeting to do it, um, we, I think we should do it this week. But what I'll say is, there's a possibility we could find out after this weekend, which I think is when the auditors are planning on doing the bulk of their work. We could find out on Monday that that number is changing. If it's only changing by a small amount, uh, Samara is confident that she can get the auditors to agree with leaving it the way it is, because it will be such a small amount that it will not be a substantial thing to need to change. If it's a significant, if it changes significantly, then worst-case scenario, we're gonna have to have a special meeting next week and we're gonna have to amend this morning to reflect the new numbers. Hopefully, that won't be the case, but that's a possibility that we should be prepared for. Um, so all of that being said, on that article, um, Gwen, do you have any questions or concerns? Is there anything about it that you think we should tweak in any way?
No, I understand it, it's fine.
Okay, um, Bruce, how about you? Any questions or things that you think should be tweaked about this article?
No, um, I followed right to the letter. I even did your math for you. I double-checked it.
Yeah, well, that's good. I appreciate that. It's a double check.
Yeah, I I think you're right on. I mean, if we're raising tax for taxes for two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and 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 Article Twenty-eight doesn't get approved, well, our taxes are probably gonna go down. Correct?
Um, well, they're gonna go there. Yeah, well, well, actually, yeah, it'll depend.
I'm talking about the municipal, I I mean, municipals, I meant.
Yeah, are a part of it, yeah. Uh, yeah, it'll ultimately depend on Article Twenty-eight. I mean, currently, the number that you see under Article Three, the bottom-line number, the two fifty-five, four twenty-five, reflects
Yes.
a reduction from last year of three thousand.
Thirty-three thousand, yeah.
Thirty-eight hundred dollars-ish. Um, so, yeah, so, you know, hopefully, the surplus will hold up.
Yeah, my issues are with appropriations, but nothing, everything looks good right up through uh Article Four. I know you don't wanna talk about that yet, because we're not into it yet, but I thought, well, you did that, we talked about that last time, that's good. But go back to what you're saying. I'm I'm good with it.
So let's just, we're gonna stick to going article by article, though. So Article Three, everybody's okay with. Gwen, I, one other question I had, and I did, not that I wanna I don't really know how to change this, but I do remember, I think, last year, you had some questions initially on whether people would be confused by the, just the formatting of it, showing the surplus. And would people grasp that that's being deducted from the sum of the previous two numbers?
That's, that's because when I was, when I did math or my checkbook or stuff, anything to me in brackets was a minus. So was that mean people are gonna think that's a minus, even though she, in her chart, she had?
Well, it is a minus in this particular case.
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
That's why it's in brackets.
It's taken off the two eighty-nine.
I'll be honest, I thought, I looked to try to think if there were, there were other way, well, first off, historically, this is how we've always presented it.
Yeah, then that's fine.
But I did think about whether there were some ways we could present it. I couldn't come up with anything better than this.
This is perfect.
Hopefully, it doesn't confuse people, so, yeah.
A second grader could do this math. I mean, this is nothing.
Yeah, this is true.
Thanks, Bruce.
Okay, so we're gonna assume that Article Three is good.
No, I'm not, I mean, to be 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 crappy, Gwen, that was a name, Gwen, that was a name towards you.
I know, I'm just.
I I'm talking about generally, Gwen, if I can say, that is, anybody that's gonna read this is gonna go right down it. General fund, highway fund, put it together, that's your total, subtract the thirty-three, and you got two fifty-five. I mean, it doesn't take a metal. Yeah, yeah, I know. I'm just saying, uh, when, this is presented really well. That's it. I don't have to go long-winded on it.
Okay, so um, moving on to Article Four. So um, shall the town collection of taxes in four installments with the due dates being August seventeen, twenty twenty-one, November sixteen, twenty twenty-one, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. So I ran these by uh Samara and Mike. They both agree that these are sensible dates. They kind of follow, they follow the pattern of what we ended up with doing this year, which is the fifteenth of the month, unless that's not on a Tuesday, and then it's the following Tuesday. So this seems, and honestly, we should do it this way moving forward, whether we're voting by Australian ballot or not.
Exactly.
To avoid having to have a twenty-minute conversation about dates.
Twenty minutes? Hello, it was longer than that.
Was it longer than that?
Oh, yeah, it was a half an hour.
Johnny Swing's amendment alone was fifteen minutes.
All right, we're fine.
Quick, okay, so Gwen, Gwen and Guy, do you have any concerns about Article Four? Does that make sense?
Nope.
Bruce, you're comfortable with Article Four?
Yeah, except I'd like to see one thing added. At the end of May seventeen, twenty twenty-two, could you put amen?
I was tempted, but I was tempted to put um that.
I dare you, dare you, dare you.
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to put that it is Norwegian Independence Day, which it is, May seventeenth is.
Okay, okay. Well, I like amen better. It's short.
I would raise to celebrate that day.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. I never heard of that one.
Yeah, it's
May seventeen, twenty twenty-two, amen.
Is it David?
I won't get started about the Swedes.
Hey, hey, okay.
What holiday was that, Dave? Can you just repeat that?
Norwegian.
It's Norwegian Independence Day or Norwegian. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, there's a lot.
I'd like the amen in caps, please.
Okay. Um, okay, so I'm not going to read, I, I, let's now talk briefly, uh, or hopefully briefly about Articles five through
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. So Articles five through twenty-three, I am not going to read all of those.
That's good.
Thank you.
Basically, all, um, they're all articles about the
By law, we have to do it this way.
Used to.
Yeah.
So for that.
Not really.
Sorry, Guy. What was that?
Well, Gwen and I were just mumbling with each other.
Oh, okay.
That's enough of that.
So, you know, we we had, we've had discussion about how we would present these, whether we would present a single article where people were voting on this whole rolled up amount of money as one appropriation or one vote, like it has historically been at our physical town meetings, or we present them individually as separate articles that people vote yes or no on each and every one of them.
I think it's gonna give the town voters a chance to really express what they're thinking about appropriations.
I think it will. I think it will also. The other thing I'll say is honestly, it's, it's a lot easier. I, I know, and I know Bruce is gonna raise this, and I know there's concerns about how many different articles we're gonna have to tally votes on, on the night, and that's, that's a fair point. However, both the formatting of the physical ballot, as well as the formatting of the articles within this warning, are infinitely easier by having each of these be their own
Exactly.
town vote. Presenting this in a way on a ba- on a single ballot where people understand exactly what they are voting for
Yes or no.
or not voting against, is going to be, I think, would also be very confusing to people. So for both of those reasons, I think it makes sense to do it this way. And I, I know they're not here, but I know Joseph is firmly in favor of this, and I believe Shelby is firmly in favor of this. Gwen, what do you think about presenting each of these as their own article? And then it'll also be its own article on the ballot, and each of these will get voted up or down.
I think what this does is the discussion in the past hasn't really been discussed a lot because it wasn't a chart form. I think this absolutely lets the people of Brookline know whether or not they want to do in, you know, each
Organization.
each organization, if they want to or they don't want to, and by the time this is done, then we're gonna know what was popular and what was not. And I think that town of Brookline needs to voice their opinion. So I think this is a perfect way for let, to let people know what they want to do.
Yep.
So I agree.
And that's, that's, that's a very good point. That's a very good point. Um, Bruce, I know you at least initially, I think, were not in favor of doing it this way. What do you think now, after what we've said and seeing it in print?
I, I don't like doing this, but I'm gonna make everybody unhappy. And this is what I have to say. I, I think it's ridiculous. That's my opinion. I've been going to town meetings. I've been going to town meetings for forty years on and off, and we've never done anything like this. And every time we
But do you understand, Bruce? Sorry, I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna interrupt you because, because it's important to clarify some things.
Okay, go ahead.
At town meeting, people can make amendments. People have the ability to say, and they have done
Yes.
have said, I don't, I think we should give more money to this organization or less money to that organization. There is no opportunity for anyone to do that this year. Sorry, continue.
Okay, well, what's that got to do with keeping it the way it was? Except if you had an, had an increase or like you did in X, uh, Articles twenty-four and twenty-five, I think it is, uh, yes, where it's a newbie, that's different. You've, we've responsibly put that in, I think, in separate articles because it was a newbie. But in the past, these people, meaning the town people, have o- over and over and over have supported these organizations. I just don't see the necessity of, of writing this all out in all these articles. For me, go ahead, Greg. Let, let it rip.
As Dave said, just two years ago, we had an issue with the Grace Cottage Foundation, and we were able to either amend it or not amend it. And that's what we do when we do a floor count. But here with an Australian ballot, it's a straight up and down for each particular organization. And it will also give the town an opportunity to show their support or lack of support for whatever they wanna spend their money on.
Okay, I got all that. All right, I've got all that. Now, how, how are we gonna count this? We're looking at fourteen, thirteen hundred. Yeah, thirteen hundred and twenty of them, based on sixty. No, 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 wait, 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 let me finish.
Okay.
Based on sixty votes, it's based on sixty people. There's twenty-two articles here, not the ones that are newbies. I come up with thirteen hundred and twenty. One, two, thirteen hundred and twenty.
Thirteen hundred and twenty, what, what are you talking about?
Well, you got twenty-three articles. If you have sixty people, that's thirteen hundred and twenty ballots.
No, no, no.
Each individual.
When you, when you count ballots, you will have a summary sheet in front of you. And then you will count and do a hash mark for each one. Then you will bring that to me. And I will put it in the sheet and take all the summaries and tell you what it is. It's just as simple, when we did the presidential
Okay.
back in November, there was a whole bunch, there was three columns, and we do a separate thing on a summary sheet. You will do the same thing. On Article five, you'll say yes or no. Article six, yes or no, and so on and so forth, down and right. So it's relatively a very simple thing to do.
Okay.
It's all how we, how we construct the summary sheet, which I'm working on right now.
Okay, all right. I'll, I'll go with it.
Let me interject one thing, just to say that, Bruce, I, I don't disagree with you that having all of these, having all of these as separate articles is going to, is going to translate into it taking more time to count the ballots on election night. Absolutely. Um, it will definitely take more time to do this. I don't personally think that's a good reason to not do it, given the benefits that I think it has to the, to putting the decision-making firmly in the hands of the townspeople and letting them decide, and, you know, and maybe, I think it's entirely, we've all been at enough town meetings to know that, I guarantee you, I don't know which organization, and I'm not gonna single out any organization. I would not be at all surprised if there are one or more organizations in this list that every year people vote yes on the whole block, when really, they wouldn't necessarily vote yes to spend X amount of money on that one organization. Now, that's unfortunate in a way because it may result in some of these organizations not getting appropriations that they're used to getting. But if that's what the will of the voters ends up being, that's what the will of the voters ends up being. You know, I don't. So
Well, it, it sure will be interesting to see how it comes out, that's for sure. I'll go along with it, but I, I just think it's too much work for nothing, but it'll be really interesting to see how it all pans out, uh, and, and as much as what you just said, Dave. That maybe they won't wanna do green update for fifty bucks. I just picked one out of blue.
Exactly, right. So, yeah, right, exactly.
So it will be interesting. I give you that.
Likely that will happen, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm, I'm done.
So
I'll go with it.
Okay, so I mean, so is it fair to say that you're, okay, okay, so you're, you're okay with it after this discussion? Okay, all right. Okay, so any, for either of you or any of you, any questions on Articles five through twenty-three?
Hmm, I didn't read them all, but probably not because we've already been over them.
Like I say, I've gone through them a few times. I'm pretty confident that they're accurate, that they reflect both the list we worked off of when we went through our appropriations and that the amounts are correct and that I haven't excluded anyone by mistake when translating it from that to this format. Okay, so let's move on. Let's assume that we're good with Articles five through twenty-three. Article, so Article twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, like we mentioned, are, are ones that historically we would have done this way, even if we were doing a regular town meeting, because they're new appropriation requests. In this format, they end up kind of being marginally no different than any of the other appropriation requests. So again, I think it's there's entire, it's entirely possible that we may find at the end of this that, again, just to pick somebody at random, that the Rural Fire Protection Program ends up getting approved, but one of the ones that historically has always gotten approved doesn't get approved. We'll see.
Yeah, we will, why won't we?
We'll see what happens and what, and how that translates to what our overall tax situation will be, because obviously all of these rolled up are in addition to the municipal taxes to be raised that we're voting in Article three.
That's right. That's right.
So the more of these that get, the more of these that end up that people vote no on, it's potentially translating, it translates into lower taxes.
Yep.
As well.
Yep.
Okay, so any questions on twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-six from anybody?
No.
Okay. Um, okay, so Article twenty-seven. Um, shall the town vote to collect its current taxes by its town treasurer pursuant to thirty-two VSA forty-seven ninety-one? This is the same article that we always have near the end of our articles at town meeting. I've changed nothing about it. It's gonna be a yes or no vote. Hopefully it gets passed. I mean, hopefully we don't have to get to the situation of trying to figure out what we do if some of these procedural things get voted down. Hopefully they won't. Any question about Article twenty-seven, Gwen or Guy? Does that make sense?
Uh, well, the bottom line, Article twenty-seven, shall the town vote to collect its current taxes? That is a, uh, a statute that is, that is in the Vermont statutes, so they have to approve that. I don't know what they would do if they didn't approve that, to be honest with you.
Yeah. I don't, yeah, I don't either. I mean, I'll say that it's something we vote on every year, and I'm, I'm not aware.
Because by law
I'm not aware of it ever getting rejected, but
Yeah, I guess we'll just see.
In theory, there must be some reason that we keep voting on it. Maybe, maybe there isn't. So we'll keep it in for now and hopefully it'll pass.
Yep, yep.
And then we get to lucky number twenty-eight, Article twenty-eight. Shall the voters appropriation of up to twenty-seven thousand dollars for recycling costs for fiscal year twenty twenty-two? So that's keeping the same form that we've been using for the article and just increasing the amount to the twenty-seven thousand dollars that we all agreed on at our final budget meeting. Anyone have, Gwen, do you have any questions or concerns about that article?
No, we've discussed it enough.
Yeah. Bruce, any questions or concerns about that article?
No, I'm just gonna miss all the fighting over it. Sorry about the smartass comments, but I just got finished doing fireworks with Dot and Patty. You fall, this, I'm in a weird mood. Anyway, I'll shut up now.
Okay, so that's, so that's the last article, and then per one of the suggested, uh, forms that I saw for an Australian ballot for a warning for people who are doing Australian ballot, they suggested putting in, though I've mentioned it in the header as well, polls open what date from what to what. Dated on, dated this twentieth day of January, twenty twenty-one, and then all of our names. One thing to note, um, I briefly contemplated whether we should put something about the informational hearing in the warning. However, after researching it, there's a specific warning that we have to do for the informational hearing. So just a reminder, you know, our voting, our Australian ballot voting will be on March first. We have to, which we'll talk about in a little bit, we have to have an informational hearing no more than ten days prior to that. We, we have to warn that informational hearing in a very specific way. I don't think it's realistic to try to incorporate that into this town meeting warning. So what I will say is hopefully we get all of that wrapped up so that we can plaster the town report with the details of that informational hearing. So nobody has an excuse for not having known about it, but it won't be part of this warning.
Dave, just one quick thought. Uh, maybe where you have the polls are open, you could put the polling location, which is the town office. Even though you, in the top of your, your letter, it says, uh, at the town office, but maybe just as a reminder, when they go down to the bottom of it, polls open and at the town office.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna amend that to say polls open at Brookline Town Office, March one, twenty twenty-one, from nine to seven.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any anything else about that little footer information, Gwen? Does that all make sense to you?
They have no excuse. It was right on the, the warning.
Yep.
Where they vote.
Bruce, any, anything about that, uh, bottom information that doesn't make sense or that you think we should
You're talking about the recycle?
No, a- after that, where it says, where it says polls open March first, we're now gonna re, we're gonna now have that say polls open at Brookline Town Office, March one, twenty twenty-one, from nine AM to seven PM.
That's fine.
Dated this twentieth day of January, twenty twenty-one, and have all of our names.
Okay, that's fine, but I just wanted to ask something. Did you all see the information that came through from the Secretary of State from this, about the legislature?
Uh, I did, yeah.
Which you could, we could, I'm not trying to put a, put a fireworks underneath our, our work here, but everything's changed. You know that.
Right. Not really changed.
Well, you can, we, it's, well, we can do whatever we want. That's what, they did say that, but I'm just saying that we had the option any time in twenty twenty-one to have a town meeting. And they've given, I don't know if you read, I don't, I don't wanna repeat everything if everybody's read it. But that just came out this afternoon, and there's money appropriated and on and on and on.
Yeah, and there, and there's things about that that we can discuss when we get to the next agenda item about the, but I, I guess before we do that, though, I do, do either of you think we should change the date of town meeting?
Absolutely not.
Gwen?
No.
Bruce, do you think we should change the date?
Not, uh, the, my only issue, and I, I'm agreeing with Gwen, basically. My only issue is we're only having an information meeting, like the school board, where they have no choice. We've done the best we could with the time limitations we had. If we were to change it a week or two, we could have it open an information meeting where people show their dissent and change the, the, the warning accordingly. I'm not saying we do that. I'm not saying we do that, Dave. I'm not saying we do that. I'm, I'm much more of the in, in, in terms of the expedience, what, what you all are thinking. I'm just telling you where, where, what I'm thinking of how the, how it's gonna be perceived in, in a community. You know, here it is, we gotta vote on it. It's a little different.
Let me just clarify something, Bruce. I don't think that's true.
Still.
I don't think anything that has been voted or that the Secretary of State has done changes the fact that we, we have the ability right now, if we want changes the fact that we, we have the ability right now, if we wanted to, we could change town meeting, the date of town meeting. But that doesn't mean we can change the requirements around. Well, if we want to have, we've already voted to have an Australian ballot, so unless we were going to change that decision, we still have to have an informational hearing prior to the Australian ballot vote. And that informational hearing has to be within ten days of the vote.
Right.
I don't think anything has changed that timing, so.
No, but it would if, 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 if the, if the, if the town meeting was later, that, that would definitely do that. But you get where I was going with it, right? That what I'm talking, I'm talking about just the contentiousness of the fact that these people really don't have a choice to discuss it. And by changing the town meeting would do that. But I'm not saying we should.
I, I just, I disagree. I mean, the reality is we've had however many meetings where we've clearly warned that we were gonna be discussing budget and various things. We sent out a communication.
Yeah, like the school board, yeah.
About the fact that we were gonna have an Australian ballot. We've done all that. I mean.
I, I agree, I agree, I agree.
I don't know that we're gonna have substantially that anyone, the reality is unless we're going to change, which I don't think we're going to do, the mechanism for the town meeting being conducted, we're not really, people aren't gonna be able to get up and amend things. There's just no provision for that. And there won't be, even if we change the date of the meeting.
I really started a fight here.
On COVID, on how many people can meet, so we can't have a meeting.
Yeah, you don't have to do, you have to do it virtually. You're right, Gwen. You're right, Gwen.
Well, no, there's no reason to do that, by the way.
It'll, it'll be a scene.
Right, just to clarify, another thing is that the state, the, the legislation that was passed allowed Brattleboro to basically, apparently the thing that was not legal for them to do last year is now legal for them to do this year. But there was no provision made for any other town to have a virtual town meeting. They still can't do that.
The more, the more I'm think, the more I'm thinking about it, I think we should just.
Even if we moved. Yes.
I, I think we should just move ahead. I, I, the more I'm thinking about it, let's just move ahead. And like you said, people have the opportunity to read our minutes. Uh, everything's been exposed. So if anybody had a, a real concern or a bitch, they had every opportunity to bring it to a select board meeting, virtually.
And we can talk, in the next, in the next discussion after this, we can talk about the informational meeting and how we get word out and stuff like that. But what I, what I, I guess the main thing I want to say to wrap it up is unless we're gonna, unless there's a real interest in changing the date of town meeting, there's no reason that we shouldn't vote to approve this warning. The particulars of how we get the word out to people about how this whole election is going to be conducted is a separate discussion, but.
Okay. I'm okay.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna stick with March first, we should vote on this thing and approve it because we have to have it posted in seven days.
Yeah. I'm good with it, Guy. I'm with Gwen.
I, I make a motion that we approve the warning as read and discussed.
You've been around too long, Gwen.
I will second that. I will second that, although I'll ask you to tweak it slightly to say with the small edit about the polling location.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the warning as discussed with, with the minor change of polls open at the town office, March first, twenty-twenty-one from nine AM to seven PM.
I'm good with it. I'll second it.
I will second that.
Yep. I'm all set.
Okay, so we're all, Gwen, you're comfortable with this, obviously. Bruce, you're comfortable with it?
Yep. Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, all right. Hearing no more discussion, then all those in favor of approving the warning for the twenty-twenty-one Brookline Town Meeting as presented with a small edit about the polling location signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so that has been approved. Guy, would you want to do me a favor? And reach out to? Well, actually, no, I think we could probably do it. What I'm, what I'm now realizing is I'm not sure everybody's name should in fact be on the bottom of this.
Oh, because they didn't vote on it?
Oh, yeah.
Actually voted on it.
Good point.
Let's, let's look into that. We'll look into that. Okay. I mean, what I would say is I think they're in favor of it, but it didn't show up, so.
Well, if you have to, if you have to omit their names, then that's what you do.
Yeah, I mean, it only has to be approved by a majority.
Exactly.
I just amend them. They're not here.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right. Thank you all for that.
Thank you.
For getting that out of the way. Okay, moving on to seven, the the Australian ballot slash informational hearing details. So I, I guess to pick up where, where we sort of started discussing with Bruce's points, so there are some things, I mean, unless, unless Guy, you disagree with me, what the legislation that was actually passed didn't really do anything to help us other than give the Secretary of State's office the ability to issue some changes in process. And some of those will be helpful, I suppose, in the course of counting perhaps. But the one thing that I did notice is that, and I'm not sure that this really matters for us, but one of the Secretary of State's procedural changes that he's issued a number twelve on the new list is a municipality may waive the deadline to file nominating paperwork. Local offices contain blah, 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 and allow those consent forms to be filed until a date determined by the municipality that will facilitate the ballot being prepared no later than twenty days before the election. So I think essentially what that means is the deadline that we told everyone for the eighteenth, which was the statutory deadline, to get their self-nominations in, we could change that now. If we wanted to. I, given our circumstances and that if I'm understanding you correctly, Guy, we have, people have nominated themselves for basically every position other than the listers.
That is correct.
Quite frankly, I think it's gonna be a hard sell for us to, even if we extend the date, I'm not sure we're gonna be able to find anybody
We need to.
willing to nominate themselves for the listers. And I think we're already prepared for the possibility that we're gonna have to try to find people to appoint or seek other assistance. I don't think it necessarily does us any good to change that date.
I, I don't believe so either.
You agree.
I think we've sent the message out. Everybody knows it. It's on the website. It's on the calendar. Uh, I think, uh, if we haven't had a reply by now, I don't think we will get a new reply.
Right.
You're talking about the information. You're talking about the information.
About the consent form.
About the consent form. So this, this basically just means that
I lost you, okay.
The consent forms were due two days ago. We could change that date if it benefited us in some way, but it doesn't really seem like it's gonna benefit us to do that.
We could just appoint the people. You're right.
So other than that, quite frankly, looking through the Secretary of State stuff, I didn't really see anything that particularly changes the way we approach most of this. But Guy, what's, what's your feeling? I mean, were there things?
I've read that, I read those directives thoroughly all the way through. And it gives the select board, you know, a lot of fluency and so forth. But the bottom line, as you said, uh, we, as the legislative body for the town of Brookline, have made your decisions and you're within the realms of the law. And I think to start, you know, changing things at this point serves no purpose. Uh, I think we're on the right direction. This is hopefully a one-time affair and we're doing our best weekend. There may be some errors, some mistakes, but I think for the most part, I think you've nailed it down pretty well.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, so one thing I wanted to talk about specifically on the informational hearing is we talked a bit last time about the idea of February twenty-fourth, which is a Wednesday. At, not a Wednesday that we would normally have a select board meeting. It's the in-between Wednesday. The last Wednesday of the month. That falls during the week where we have to have an informational hearing. Because we have to have an informational hearing within the ten days preceding our town meeting. Which basically means we have to have one sometime between February nineteenth and February twenty-eighth. Well, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth seems like as sensible a date to do it as any.
Days before.
That's not ten days before.
Anytime.
No, it was in, within, boy.
Just has to be, yeah, no more than ten days before. I've already reached out to, well, first off, let's just talk about that date, because I think it would behoove us to decide on that being the date, even though we're not gonna do the, we're not gonna produce the formal warning for it yet. But I think it would be good for us to decide on that date because then next weekend, when I put the town report together, I can include that date in various places, so it's clear to everybody when the informational hearing is going to be. And there's a decent chance that people will physically receive the town report prior to that date. So there would, you know, it would, it would serve a purpose to try to publicize it through the town report, but we need to decide that now in order to make that possible.
Well, that has to happen, Dave.
Gwen and Guy, do you, sorry?
That has to happen. That town report's gotta come out before the informational meeting.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it's supposed to. But, um, I, I mean, there's a few things to point out. I don't know if you've mailed anything lately.
Oh, boy.
But, you know, quite frankly, all bets are off on that part of the process. Until I have, until I've been given the auditor's report and the final reports, which the auditors have not yet looked at, I can't produce anything. So whether we'll meet these deadlines is an unknown question at the point. But assuming that we will, it makes sense to put that informational date into it. So Gwen, do you have a problem? Does February twenty-fourth work for you and make sense for that informational?
Yes.
Guy, does that work for you? Does that make sense?
That, uh, you, you've got all my reports. Everything's good. Uh, I think, you know, they'll have the town meeting report in the hands of everybody. They'll have a chance to take a look at it and, um, you know, hopefully they will be able to ask the questions and join the meeting.
Right. Um, so Bruce, is February twenty-fourth, we would do it the same as a select board meeting in that it, because it would actually be a select board meeting.
Yeah.
We would do it at six thirty PM.
Yeah, the, the only thing is if that, the only thing is if that booklet doesn't come out, we got a problem. Um, and then we'd have to change it, then we'd have to change the date of the town meeting. And now the booklet's already come out. We'd have to put, well, wait a minute. You go, wait, 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 let me finish, please. If the books haven't come out and you have, you know, informational meeting, I, we, how does that work? I mean.
Well, because here's the thing, the informational meeting is on the article, there will be an agenda for that informational meeting. And the agenda will closely resemble the warning for town meeting.
Right.
So though, though I agree with you, it would be better and easier if people physically had received a town report
Oh, I see what you mean.
this warning and the other informational and, and the other stuff with it, but
Yeah.
it is not a requirement, quite frankly, for having that. We're, we're gonna have to have that informational meeting at that point, whether people get their town reports or not.
Okay, okay.
Hopefully they will. Uh, it'll be, it'll be a better discussion and a more informed discussion if they have gotten them, but it's the, the two are somewhat separate requirements. Peter, let me ask you this. Are you available February twenty-fourth to attend and take minutes for that meeting? It's okay if you're not. We can, we can figure something out. I just wasn't sure whether that was a
It appears that that's an open date. And I could, yes.
All right, that would make it even better. Um, so the other thing I'll say is that, and I can't remember whether I floated this date to him or not, but I did have a conversation with David Parker. And I mentioned to him that though this informational meeting will be a select board meeting, and there's not technically, we wouldn't technically need a moderator or anything. I think it would make sense in keeping with our tradition and just in keeping with David's skill set for him to possibly moderate that meeting. And he agrees that that would make sense and he's totally on board if we want him to do that. So Gwen, do you think it would make sense to have David? Basically, what the moderator would do like our somewhat like our town meetings would be, he'll go through and read the article and then essentially open it up for discussion on each of the articles for people to ask questions.
Sounds good.
The advantage of having David do that is it will then also presumably give me a little bit more of an ability to administrate the Zoom call because that's gonna be potentially, depending on how many people show up, that's gonna be potentially a bit of an organizational struggle. Bruce, does that make sense to you to have David?
Yeah, yeah, really, yeah, it really does. And it also gives a little bit of legitimacy to it. It's almost, man, you can't say mimicking a town meeting, but you'll be doing the Zoom thing. And, and you have the, you'll have the, have David running it. I, I like it. I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
David, would, would he be there? Would he be at the town office with you so you can coordinate both sides?
Well, no, I mean, we'll, what we'll do for that presumably is, um, will yeah, I don't know. We have to figure that all out.
Yeah, okay.
The logistics of how we will do it, I'm not completely sure. We'll have, yeah, we'll have to figure that part out. Um, Guy, do we now, you now have a, the town Zoom account is a professional account, right?
It is.
Because I think we might, for the purposes of this, that informational meeting, we might, it might make more sense for us to use the town's account rather than my own.
I, I'll have to review that account, but it's real simple just to move it over to a, an account that can have.
Well, let's talk about it. If it, if it isn't, then we don't necessarily need to do that. Um, I mean, I have a professional account and it's fully functional. I'm just not sure whether there might be a I don't know. I'm just not sure whether there might be a reason that it would look better for it to be the town's account rather than my own account. Uh, I haven't, I haven't fully.
Yeah, and I, to be honest with you, um, to be honest with you, I think it should be on the town because anytime you use your equipment, your stuff, it opens up you to, to be able to be scrutinized. No, it
Yeah, right. Yeah, maybe.
It just makes sense. And I can, I can, I can do that real, real easy.
Okay, so we can talk about, we don't have to figure that out yet, but we'll talk about that as, as we get closer to that. What I will say while we're on the topic of the informational meeting is that the, at our next meeting, February third, the, at our next meeting, February third, we will have to, there's a couple of things that we're going to have to do at the next meeting, just because of timing. If, if we have the, uh, well, before, sorry, before I get sidetracked, let's just to firm everything up, um, I'm going to make a motion that we set the date for our town meeting informational hearing to be February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, at six thirty P M via Zoom. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll set.
Set it by Gwen. Um, okay. Does anybody have any questions about that before we vote that? Just so we officially vote that's going to be the case. Gwen, you're okay with that, obviously?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Then all those in favor of setting our town meeting informational hearing to be February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, it's starting at six thirty P M via Zoom, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that's, that's decided. So now what I'll say is because our, because our informational hearing is going to be that day, we have to warn and post that, the details of that meeting at least ten days prior to that.
Hmm, it's the fourteenth. Valentine's Day, my anniversary.
So here's the thing. So, so we have to have that posted by the fourteenth. Um, we don't have a meeting on the tenth. We have a meeting on the third. We also have to have our ballots produced by February ninth. So what I'll say is February third, our next meeting, we're going to have to finalize our ballot. And, uh, approve it so that it can be produced in the week following. And we also are going to have to officially warn the informational meeting, which shouldn't be a big deal because we've already decided on the date. We just need to, I just need to figure out the form of the warning. So Guy, you have all of the people who've nominated themselves for the various positions, right?
Yes, I do.
You, um, could you type that up into an email?
Yep.
And send it around to all of us when you have a chance?
I will. I'll do that tomorrow or, uh, yeah, I can do it tomorrow. I think Gwen and I can do that tomorrow. We'll probably, Gwen will do it.
It doesn't have to be tomorrow. I mean, in the next, in the next few days.
Deviation of responsibility.
In the next several days is fine. Um, because here's what I'm going to suggest about the ballot. So if you can circulate that, we have a sample document for the ballot, um, that we got from J P. I will then go through and create a draft version of the ballot.
As a word document?
Circulated, circulated to everybody prior to our next meeting. So that we can then make any tweaks to it we need to make and hopefully then vote on it and approve it at the February third meeting. Then we'll have a ballot that we can literally make copies of and have ready to go. Now here's a, something I'm not sure I'm, I totally understand, Guy, about the process. Do we have to? And you're, because you're the one who's going to have to administrate this election. Do you have to allow early voting for this?
We will. I will allow absentee ballots and people will have to request them. I don't want to do a, a four hundred and forty-five mailing thing.
Oh, please.
And we will get that message out. I did already put it on a website that absentee ballots will be uh, allowed because that's a federal, that's a law. And, um, so that should be no problem. Uh, once we get the ballot, uh, you know, you craft the ballot, we'll be able to send them out to people who request them.
Right. So, um, and when you get a chance, and you may, you may already know it, but when you get a chance, also, I would appreciate it if you would go through and double check the dates on these things. I'm pretty sure that February ninth is the deadline for us to have ballots. But I'd appreciate it if you could, you, if you could just form your own opinion on the dates to make sure I have.
Okay. Dates for the ballots. I will get all the dates predicated on March first as our meeting.
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, like I said, I'm pretty sure I'm right.
Yep.
It would be good to double check. Um, and we can firm all that stuff up at the February third meeting.
Okay.
So any, that might have been pretty much all I had that I was thinking about as far as the informational hearing and the ballots. Gwen, do you have any other thoughts or questions about either the ballots that we're going to produce or the informational hearing?
No.
At the moment. Bruce, what about you?
I'm all set. I'm all set. Nope. All set.
All right.
Let's move on.
Okay. Um, okay. Moving on quickly to the town report, um, I haven't looked at it yet, but I will. Guy, thank you for sending me your stuff. I'm gonna do, I'll tell you right now, the select board report will be fairly brief, uh, in comparison to what they may have been at times in the past. I haven't thought much about it, but I need to think about it because I have to do it in the next week or so. Once I've written something, I'll send it to you guys for you to read and tell me what you think.
Okay.
But I haven't even really thought about it yet, but it'll be, it's, it'll be brief.
Yeah, well, it's.
And that's okay. I mean, it's, um,
That's fine.
Yeah.
It'll be what it'll be. Uh, any, oh, I guess one other thing I'll say about the town report. I haven't talked to the printer yet about this, but once I get, oh, sorry, here's another thing. Guy, when you have a chance, can you send me like you did last year, a, um, C S V file of the voter records?
The voter checklist?
Voter checklist, yeah. I need people's mailing addresses.
Okay.
I need people on the voter checklist and their mailing addresses.
Okay.
To be able to use for the data file for their mailing.
Yep.
Once, once I get to the point of having things ready for the printer, my plan had been last year, we mailed all of these standard pre-sort, which is the cheapest way you can mail them. Uh, and it saved us, I don't know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks maybe. Um, this year, I'm not sure that's going to be a good idea. Because my understanding of standard pre-sort is that the post office can just kind of ignore standard things until they feel like it. And that might be a prob, that might be a real problem this year. So it's possible that the town report may end up costing us a little more than we were expecting because we might have to mail these first class.
Those, those costs can be absorbed by the Secretary of State if we submit a, uh,
Ah, yes.
Yeah, 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 that's right. That's right. That's right.
That's right.
Increase to that cost would be, yeah, that's a very good point, Guy.
Yep, that's a tech, that's.
Count on going first class, the best way, the fastest way, and we'll get reimbursed from the state.
That's a great, yeah, thank you for pointing that out. That's a great idea.
Great, yeah.
Okay, so all the more reason we'll definitely do that. It doesn't amount to a lot of money, but. Okay, so that's it on the town report. Um, moving on to building update, uh, Bruce.
Okay, everybody hold on to this piece. I'm going to rip right through this, hopefully. Welcome. I'm not going to read through that, that, that section fifteen of the lease. Basically, I, the point was made when, when, uh, when the agenda change was discussed. Oh, basically what it says is, what I've been trying to get away from is being this on-call stuff that's costing us phenomenal amount of money. When they're paying sixty dollars a day for that building based on thirty, thirty day month. So I'm trying to put an end to that. Okay, saying that, you all heard my analysis last time about the three cars and the three different facets of people that I'm trying to get to cover that building. Okay. And saying that, I've been going anywhere near Sandry since we just discussed it about the gas. Now, the other two, Pete Noble has completed the work on the heat and it looks like it's running great at this point. He, I don't need to get long-winded about that either. We're going to get another bill from him for probably two hundred dollars is my guess. Guy, warning, that should be coming. And I got, saw the bill today from, from Scott Bovat for two hundred dollars. I'm going to explain that real quick. Um, we were having a continuing problem with the maintenance of that dang goddamn water system. And, pardon me? Question?
Watch your language, please. We're being.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, I can do that. I guess a goddamn. Anyway, now, since saying that, um, Scott, Scott Bovat and I talked for twenty, twenty-five minutes about three fourths. Uh, when was it? Today's Wednesday, Monday. And we, we talked it out really well. And we've been, we've been in ongoing discussions on how to handle this damn water system. I took the God out of it. Um, so anyway, he came up with the idea of somebody else maintaining it if they're trained. I've talked to him. And that's an idea. I talked to Mark about it. He's interested. We haven't concluded whether he's going to do it yet because it's, it's based on some of the details, but it, it's not rocket science to take those tubes off, re-clean them and put them back together. And by Mark helping us out would save us a considerable amount of money. So we're pursuing that. If that wasn't the case, we would have to put in another system to back up that U V system. That would be at least three to five thousand dollars. So after thinking about it overnight or two, I thought the best way was to see if Mark or somebody else could involve themselves into maintaining it. I, Bruce, happy to go over there and see if something's starting to go wrong. Last weekend, after we had all the power outages, both alarms were on. And had to do with the power outage and sediment and whatever the hell went, went wrong. They had no water. Scott called Bovat came over on the, on Monday, the eighteenth and straightened it all out and submitted a quick bill for two hundred bucks. Trying to stabilize that part now and which I just said, so if, if Mark goes along with it, everything works out, okay. Scott's going to train him. And Mark is not going to be so much on call, but if I got a red light or two going on, he's going to get a phone call. I've already, we've already kind of talked about that. And he'll come over and clean the tubes and, and the bulbs and stuff and whatever we got to do in order to get back to a clear, clear light on the, on the two sides of the water system. That's it, I believe. Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's the whole story, unless anybody has a question. Oh, one last thing, I just. Yeah, I just want to, want to one re, I want to double reiterate, I'm really trying to get away from this, I, I've told her that, Olivia, of this on-call stuff because it's extremely expensive for a lousy sixty dollars a, I didn't say this to her, sixty dollars a day that we're getting for rent for that building, based on a thirty day month. That's it.
Well, I mean, yeah, as much as we can avoid it, and I'm sure they can appreciate that too. I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're cooperative. I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to give the implication that they're not cooperative, not, not the case at all. But their understanding, Olivia's quite clear into knowing how much money we've been spending on that building in the last two months, and she knows I've had it. So with all that being said, I'm trying to get, yes? Question?
Um, where's the Jeffords? There's a Jeffords invoice in the A P warrant?
Yeah, the five hundred dollars, that was approved by, kind of approved by me. I had a discussion with Tim Jeffords on, I believe it was the thirteenth of December. The discussion was to change that water exchanger because we figured that was what, that they determined that that was what was causing the problem with the banging and everything else and what was going on. He and I had this long, I'll, I'll make it quick. He and I had this long discussion about, he's not comfortable with a certain ones that he's been using. He's had troubles with them. He was supposed to call me back with a discussion again about what we were going to do about it. I told him in the first discussion that I did not want to go cheap for a hundred bucks difference here or there. But he never did call me back. He went ahead and changed it, never said a word to me, did it. And that's the five hundred dollar bill that you see.
Okay, all right. Okay.
But other than that.
That wasn't something you were surprised by, so that's.
No, and other than that, I'm aware of, and I don't know if they've changed them or not, some flaps on the front of the, of the, of the double boiler that we saw when they inspected the building, when they did the furnace check, the boiler check back in October that they were going to change. I don't know if they've changed those or not. Um, but if they do change them, again, I'm good with that too. But other than that, they're done.
Okay.
And, and Olivia knows it. And Olivia has been pointedly told that these are the people that are going to be doing the work on the building from here on in. And that's what I'm trying to channel my efforts towards.
Guy, you have a question for Bruce?
Oh, yeah, just one quick question or two for Bruce. Uh, the, were you able to ascertain whether the, uh, they were the people that put that trash by the, um,
No, I didn't ask them. And you know what, Guy? I didn't, sorry, I'll cut you off. I did not ask them, but I don't think.
Daycare while there, and I was just curious if you had a chance to.
No, I, I had forgotten to, uh, you know, wait just a moment. And I did go or last weekend around back after I'd looked around and noticed that the, remember I told you about the plastic that I offered to take away from last fall? Was still there. So the answer to your question is no, I didn't, but I still can ask them. But I didn't see anything what I thought was removed from the back of the building.
And my second question was that when we have, when we have a power outage as we did, uh, last week, is there any way that we can do that seamlessly to reset this system? Or do we need to really call in a plumber to do that?
That's, that's what, that's what, uh, if it's a, when, when that happens like that, that's the first time I've seen that happen like that. Both sides, the alarms were on. I canceled off the alarms, but they had no water. In that case, in that particular case, I'd have to, if Mark was doing this servicing, I'd either have to drag him from where he ever is and get him to do it, or get Scott Bovat to do it. That, that's really the answer to that. But that, that's the first time I've seen that happen.
Yeah.
And that's been what? That's been two years.
It happens in the town office every time we have a power outage. The
Yeah.
System, the alarm goes off, you guys get a call out, but basically.
This is different.
Yeah.
Guy, this is different. No, what, what this is, this is entirely different.
Okay.
Um, it, you're, you're creating a coincidence. And basically what's happening is when that happens, Scott's under the understanding that the well is Greek kicking up and and causing the issue with, with extra, extra, uh, excuse me.
Okay, I'm done.
Late day, excessive sediment or iron or something that's causing the, the tubes to clog up and it sets, it darkens and get, darkens, uh, the plenums and causes the alarm situation to go off.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Okay. Um, all right. Thanks for all that, Bruce.
Yeah, I'm done.
Guy, um, what's going on with town, what's going on with town?
Uh, basically, we're doing town clerk duties. Uh, we've had a lot of, uh, um, Tyler, there's been a number of changes and, you know, uh, refinancing, but uh, we're in front of it. There have been a few people that already registered their dogs and I'm going to reemphasize that, that you can register your dog by just putting a check and, uh, in, as long as your dog's rabies certificate is up to date, put a check in the back door, tell me what the dog's name is, who you are, and we can mail you the certificate. So that's pretty easy. Other than that, everything is just going on hunky-dory.
Excellent. Thank you. Mark, um, you've survived with us through this. You're still alive. If you're still alive, tell us what's going on with you.
Okay, well, uh, yes, since I'd seen you last, um, you know, I, I've talked with Henry Carr about the tree service. Um, the other thing is just monitoring, uh, roads, working with arch. Um, the other thing is just monitoring, uh, roads, working with Archie, um. Last week, ordered another load of road salt. So our salt shed is full, our sand shed is full. Um, we finished up, uh, repairing the washouts from Christmas Day, uh, snow rainstorm, um, fixed them back up, uh, as close as we could to get for better plowing. Um, and then with the last, uh, snowstorm that we received with the, the heavy wet, we had a lot of downed trees and branches as well as the power outage. So I spent a couple of days, uh, riding on the roads and, um, cleaning up tree debris. There's gonna be a lot of cleanup when the snowbanks melt back. But basically I've just been, uh, trying to keep the roads, uh, free of tree debris, working with Archie on that. So that's, that's about it.
Sounds good to me.
Excellent. Thank you.
We'll continue to talk about what we talked about before, once I talk to Scott.
Yep, not a problem.
Yep, yep, thank you. Okay.
Alright, moving on to communications, um, I'll try to do this. There's a lot of, there's quite a few emails. So emails, um, we all saw the, the, Guy, thanks for scanning it and sending it around. We saw the resignation note from Marcia and Sheila, um, as of the first Tuesday in March.
Yes.
I'll just note, we really appreciate all of the effort that they've put in over the years. We're sorry to see them go, but we really, I know all of the board really appreciates all of the time and effort that they've put in over the years.
Yes.
To help the town. So that's greatly appreciated and they will be missed. Um, um, related to that sort of is, um, we got a, uh, a note from, um, Casey O'Hara at the property valuation and review division of the Department of Taxes related to, we all, we, we discussed a few meetings ago that we had gotten a letter and we and the listeners had gotten a letter that our CLA had, um, gone down to one hundred point four or five, um, which is actually an improvement. But because it's a change of more than five percent, um, it's something that they flag as being something we perhaps should look into more closely. Um, they sent sort of a standard letter about things we might wanna consider. Um, if we haven't had, do we know when the last real reappraisal was?
Yeah. Twenty oh seven, wasn't it, uh, Guy?
Two thousand and seven.
Yeah.
I mean, so, you know, to their point, they say if your last full reappraisal was more than ten years ago, we strongly recommend a complete reappraisal. Um, I'm not.
Let them pay for it.
Get to that point. Um, but I think as we sort out our Lister situation following town meeting, we, you know, maybe we can tap into some of the resources that guys already reached out to, to just get more perspective on. Um, uh, do we actually have anything we should be concerned about particularly, uh, or not? But that's just something.
In regard to that letter, there was also a little bit of a disclaimer saying that small towns do bounce around. And, uh, you know, I, I think we're in relatively good shape, but Marcia and Sheila, Marcia has also contacted some appraisal companies that she's comfortable with and there's a two or three year waiting list and we are on a waiting list. Any event we need to do that.
For them to reappraise? Okay.
Yes.
And how much money, how much money do we have now?
I think about eighteen thousand, I think. Uh, I, 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 I'm speculating, but it's the considerable amount that should cover most of the appraisal.
Okay.
Um, anyway, moving on with emails, um, so, um, I got an email from both our Margot, who's our project manager on the salt sand shed. Uh, and also I exchanged another email with Chris Hunt from V-Trans, who is the V-Trans, um, project manager on that project. We have, we have to, um, we have to get a certification on the right-of-way from an attorney. So we need to send the complete plans to an attorney and get them to sign off on the fact that we own, that there's no property rights issues or right-of-way issues related to this property or the construction. Um, it's a requirement of the grant that this be done by an attorney. It's not something that we can not do. Um, Guy, I, I honestly can't remember who we last used as an attorney.
Uh, we used, uh, what's her name? Um?
Lori?
Yeah, Lori, Lori Rowell, and we also use Bob Fisher. Uh, I guess I'm a little concerned about, you know, why we have to do that when we have given, um, the engineer the deed for the property that says, look, see there, but whatever.
Well, that, yeah, I specifically asked that question of Chris Hunt from V-Trans, but the thing is, remember, this is a federal grant that we received for doing this. And there are requirements for process that probably don't make sense in lots of cases. But that doesn't change the fact that that's a requirement. I asked him, I asked him that and said, is there really no, do we really have to incur this expense and delay when there's no reason? He said, unfortunately, it's a requirement.
Uh, maybe we should ask Ron Bell if he has anybody that he might think that, you know, is well-versed in this. You know, an attorney's name maybe, uh, but that's, you know, I, I, you know, at three hundred dollars an hour, it, it's a, a little more than I thought we would have to do, but that's what it is.
Um, okay, when you get a chance, can you, can you email me the contact, whatever contact information you have for these attorneys?
Sure.
Um, and I guess I can also.
Lori Rowell and Bob Fisher. And, um, like I say, you might wanna just give, uh, uh, Ron Bell a call and see if there's any attorneys that he recommends, you know, uh, that may be well-versed in this and maybe hopefully know the pattern that they have to use. Uh, title search, I don't know. It's basically a title search.
Yeah, I think so essentially. Um, there's a form letter that they have to basically sign off on. Um, that, that details what they're attesting to. Um, okay, yeah, if you can send me that and then I'll, um, oh, hang on.
Nothing but money.
Lots of it.
Um, okay, um, quickly, um, Guy, I think you and I possibly both will have gotten this. Another Census Bureau boundary certification.
Right, and that's a, it's a non, you don't have to do, it's strictly a volunteer thing.
Alright.
And I'm just gonna flag it at this point because, uh, we're pretty busy. Um, you know, I'll, I'll take another look at it, but.
I'm fine with that. Um, and then the only other thing that I had, I guess, was that we, and Guy sent this around and I think I also saw it from, um, Wyndham Regional, there's a, you know, a, a small-scale bike and pedestrian grant program. Applications are due in a few weeks. Um, I don't see any reason that we would ever apply for something like this unless somebody feels otherwise. Um, it would be if we were gonna, I don't know, if we needed to put in some pedestrian crossings or bike lanes, do we wanna do?
Oh, jeez.
Um, no, I mean, it's a good idea. It just doesn't.
Yeah.
Though we do have cyclists in our town, I don't think this really applies to us. Um, so that's it for email, regular mail. Um, we got a gorgeous VLCT newsletter. We got a package from VLCT with a community leadership in action book. Um, I, I guess this is a print book that we can keep here for people to look at about community leadership. Envelope. Uh, then we have, um, well, something for Shelby, which she still hasn't picked up.
Would you just remind her?
Uh, I, I'm not, she's not on the.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I, I.
I'll send her an email tomorrow.
Yeah. Um, we got a letter from Comcast about if we, if we experience network.
In that clipboard.
We experience network problems. This just tells us who their contact people are.
Yeah, we get that letter every year.
Yeah. Um, there's a letter, oh, this is the resignation from Marcia and Sheila, the physical copy of it. Um, we got a application for a right-of-way access from Sam Bourne. Um, for a new driveway cut, I guess.
I, I, I wanted to share that with you. The select board has to sign off on it, but I think it might be something that Mark has to take a look at also. Mark, it's for the right-of-way, uh, Mark, you still there?
Yes, yeah.
All right, you know that, the same thing we did for, uh, Tom Bloom?
Right, yeah. Uh, Sam wants to just move his driveway access, uh, further south down Whitney Hill Road, but he's not in a hurry. He just wanted to get his application in and, uh, I've gone and looked at it, talked to Archie Clark about it. And, uh, so we, we've, uh, you know, he, he just, he told me recently that he just wanted to get his application in and, uh, he probably won't do anything until this next year.
Okay, so you guys have looked at it? Are you okay with what he's proposing?
Um, we, we've just looked at it so far. Um, we haven't, uh, we haven't approved it, but we, it looks like it will pass.
Okay, alright, so we'll just hold on to this. Once you guys.
Should I put that letter in your mailbox, uh, um, Mark?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, you can do that. And, uh, if I can get Archie up there again, uh, and, and then we can verify it for okay and then have the, have the select board, uh, look it over.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, okay, and then the, um, the only other thing was there's a letter from Dot. This is the thing. Uh, I guess Bruce, you were starting to mention.
Yes.
An animal control thing, um, about, Guy called me about the attached form you received regarding a dog bite report from Grace Cottage. Um, while I am no longer the health officer, as the animal control officer, I can, with your permission, follow up on this report and seek rabies information as well as license information on this dog. Um, I would like the fact that the town was given this report by Grace Cottage Hospital to be recorded in the minutes at the next board meeting. Please send me an email if it's okay with you for me to follow up on this event. I'll forward you any information I get. The form needs to be kept at the town office for documentation purposes. Um, so, yeah, I guess somebody was bitten by a.
Colby White. Colby White from Gresley Brook Road. It was her own dog.
Okay. Um, okay, yeah, so I'll email Dot to say, yes, please, um, follow up on it. Uh, and that's it for regular mail.
It's noted in the minutes along with the dog owner.
Thank you. Um, okay, so that's it for correspondence. Moving on to the pay warrants. First up is the payroll warrant. Um, Gwen, did you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
No.
Bruce, did you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
No.
Okay, then I'd make a motion that we approve payroll warrant two zero two one dash zero three dated January twentieth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of one thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruce. Uh, any discussion here? None? All those in favor of approving payroll warrant two zero two one dash zero three dated January twentieth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of one thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, payroll warrant is approved. Next up is the accounts payable warrant. Um, Gwen, did you have any questions on the accounts payable warrant?
No.
Bruce, did you have any questions on the accounts payable warrant?
I looked at them twice, no.
Uh, then I'd make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant two zero two one dash zero four dated January twentieth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gwen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant two zero two one dash zero four dated January twentieth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, then the accounts payable warrant is also approved. Uh, which brings us to setting the agenda for the next meeting. Um, so as I mentioned, we'll we'll actually have an agenda item for the town meeting ballot, which we'll have to finalize. We'll have a agenda item for the informational hearing, which we'll have to warn. Um, we will have the normal stuff. Um, not sure there's anything else that's coming to mind other than those things at the moment. Gwen, can you think of anything else for the agenda for February third?
Hmm, no.
Bruce, can you think of anything else for the agenda for February third?
No, I think we've, uh, gotten everything pretty well organized at this point. No.
The ballot, the ballot part of it might take us a little while, uh, depending on how close to finalized it is when we get to that point, but still.
Uh-huh.
Well, just to, just to remind you again, whatever road you take to get the ballots, all that can be reimbursed by the Secretary of State.
Yeah, right.
Um, so I guess, yeah, speaking of which, just to, to clarify, I mean, I think we talked about it last time and just to make sure everybody's still in agreement. I know now that we could get, we could get reimbursement if we had somebody print these. Um, I still think we should just do them ourselves.
That's fine. That's fine with me.
Does anybody disagree with that?
No.
I, I just, the timing, we got, we have to have them produced by February ninth. I, I'd be surprised if by the time we put them together and figure out what's going, I, I'd be surprised if we could find somebody who could produce them that quickly, anyway.
Yeah.
I think it's better if we do them ourselves. We just have more control. Um, it won't, it won't be. Gwen, do you still agree with that?
Gwen, do you agree with that? Yes.
Oh, uh, can I call you Cat, back, Kathy? I'm in a meeting, okay? Alright, bye.
Um, okay, um, alright, so information, so that'll, those will be the things on the agenda for the moment. Uh, then I guess I would make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second to that?
I second it.
Bruce seconds it. Uh, okay, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we're adjourned at eight forty-four P M.